Call the meeting to order for the meeting of the Ripon City Council, May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. If we could have everyone stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation. Councilman DeGraff, you're on.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to make your prayer?
Our Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather and do the business of this community. We pray for those who participated in tonight's meeting, that decisions would be made that are for the good of our community. We pray in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Roll call.
Councilmember Mike Rastuccia.
Present.
Dean Uker.
Here.
Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jake Parks.
There.
Mayor Leo Suber.
Present. Next item on the agenda is public discussion. This is the time for any member of the audience who wishes to address the council to approach the podium. You need your name, address, and there is a five-minute limit for presentations.
Today is Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. I'm in front of the Ripon City Council. My name is Mary Lynn Wheeler Reynolds. I went over to the administrative office and made copies, had copies made, packets indicating the packet is entitled Preliminary Change of Ownership Report, Document Number Zero Ten Twenty-two, seven, six, one. And I'm going to give these copies to the gentleman to my right, and he can pass these to the city council members. I don't know if there were enough made. So as I'm speaking, he can, you can reference that document.
Thank you, sir.
As you already know, I am the, I purchased Lot Fifteen from the builder, Mark Wilber of McRoe-Rilbert Communities. I am the outright owner of that land. I purchased it for five thousand dollars. I have the residential building built using my own separate funds. I've already been here and made it very clear that there's something in the state of California called separate property laws, which the Ripon Police Department officers violated when they arrested me on numerous occasions. In a previous city council meeting, I provided copies of the document number Zero Ten Twenty-two, seven, sixty-one. And on that particular document, it's called the Documentary Transfer County. It's called a grant deed. You should have, I didn't give you a copy of that today. You've had a copy of this before. I provided this already. On this particular grant deed, it indicates that the deed was filed in Stanislaus County in two thousand and one. The person who signed it is someone named Gina Thret. Apparently, she's from the county. And the whole point of this is, is that the property in question, twelve twenty-one Sapphire Court, Ripon, California, is in San Joaquin County. The question is, and for those people who are really smart and looked at this deed, they would ask this question, why did Mark Wilber file this deed in Stanislaus County when the property in question is in San Joaquin County? I have since contacted several title companies, including Fidelity Title Company, asking that question because they handled the initial transaction. Fidelity Title Company could not answer that question. Chicago Title Company could not answer that question. They could not answer that question because fraud was involved. There was no reason for the builder to file the deed in Stanislaus County. Now, for those of you who are smart, if you look at the Preliminary Change of Ownership Report that's in front of you, if you turn to the second page, you see a signature at the bottom, and it says Philip Reynolds. The date is February, it says two ten zero one, the bottom, which is February tenth twenty thousand, two thousand and one. Now, the whole point of this is, if you notice, my name is not on there. Only my estranged husband's name is on there. Only his name is on there for a reason. Smart people can figure this out. Fraud was involved. This was a secret purchase that my estranged husband purchased from the builder, Mark Wilber of McRoe-Rilbert Communities. That's why Mark Wilber filed the deed in Stanislaus County because my estranged husband secretly and fraudently purchased a home, a track home from McRoe-Rilbert, behind my back, utilizing my real estate as collateral. As I point already, my estranged husband did not own any real estate until he married me. Marrying me did not entitle him to take out endless fraudulent loans. I've already put the title companies on notice that what they did was fraudulent. Everyone's excuse is, well, he's, can take out HELOC loans. HELOC loans cannot be taken out without the person, the real estate person's consent, knowledge and consent. I didn't consent to these loans. If you look at the top of the page, it says one, okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Ripon Community. I'm Jason Loughlin with Assemblymember Heath Flores' office with a brief update from our office. I'll start with the summit legislation that the Assemblyman has authored. A B fourteen forty-four is forgiving student loan debt for nurses and doctors in rural areas. We are considered a rural area, and everywhere there is a shortage of medical professionals. This bill will hopefully motivate, if passed and signed by the governor, motivate new doctors, surgeons, and nurses to move to this area. And if you move to a rural area, you will have up to fifty thousand dollars paid off your student loans. In addition to that, we are happy to report that A B seventeen thirty-two, which will allow us to start a homeless resource center in the city of Manteca, has passed both committees unanimously and the Assembly for unanimously. This resource center will help folks that are essentially down on their luck. I'll give you a brief example for the, about those kind of folks currently that we know of. There are seven hundred students within the Manteca Unified School District that are homeless. And then I'll just give one last bill here. S B five hundred, Senate Bill Five Hundred, that the Assemblyman has co-authored, will help disabled veterans with education assistance, financial and otherwise. Another update, we're happy to report that we are getting the ball rolling here with a small community government relations committee. Our first meeting will be July twenty-ninth at eleven-thirty. This will include four cities within our district with a population of less than twenty thousand people. It'll be Houston, the city of Ripon, Waterford, pardon me, and Escalon. The purpose of this committee is to listen to the concerns of smaller communities, keep a united voice, and exchange legislative ideas. Like I said, our first meeting will be July twenty-ninth at eleven-thirty at our district office, and lunch will be provided. We thank Councilman Mike Rastuccia for bringing this idea to our attention, and we are acting on it, and we're happy to work with him to move this forward. If you have any questions for me, please reach out to myself or our office, or stop by and visit at five seven eight North Womah Avenue, Suite B, or we're right next door to the city attorney. Thank you. That is my update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Next item, approval of the minutes for the April ninth, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
So moved.
All right, where's my thing here? Now, do I need to do anything, or have you brought things up to par? Haven't done anything for three months, so I'm glad you got that worked out. Next item on the, what?
Not a bad thing.
I know. Worked hard for that. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
It's all approved.
Well, first of all, relax.
He was trying to beat you to the punch.
I know. Well, I hate to have to pull back on the, any items to be pulled from the consent calendar? This is when you do it.
I had three, but I got my answers earlier, so I'm fine.
Well, let's see if any of my two are your three.
Okay.
I want to pull one point three A and one point three B. Nothing else? Then we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
And the next item is the approval of the consent calendar as amended.
So move.
Oh, well, that's fine, yeah. All right, one point three eight. I just have really one question. In looking at that audit, it shows that there is a balance of a hundred, of one point five million dollars in Measure K money at the end of the year. And if I read the thing right, we get about three hundred thousand dollars a year. So, simple math would say we haven't done anything with that money for at least five years. What can we do with it?
So, right now, in the Street and Road Operations Fund, I think we have a balance of about two million dollars. And obviously, this is a part of it, so.
Is this part of that two million?
Yes.
Okay.
So there's a number of sources of funding, Measure K being one of them, Highway User Tax, LTF, et cetera, but they all make up that. So that's what the money that we use to pay for Public Works crews and engineering to do the internal projects, we do the signage, crack patching, poles, the design of the street and road projects, but we also use it to go out and do the overlays, cape seals in those projects as well. So we let the balance build up a little bit because of the Stockton Avenue project coming up, just making sure we had the funds available, and then obviously, Mahol and Service. So that money will go to those.
So that project is gonna?
All those projects.
Audit next year should show this amount of money going down because we are going to use it on some stuff.
Right.
Okay, I got it.
And not to make it more confusing, but we do track each of these specific, or separately, and then at the end of the year, Lisa and I go through, and we transfer money out of Measure K or Highway User Tax or whatever, which ones, to pay for the year's projects. So sometimes one fund, just because it has a lot of flexibility, which Measure K has a lot of flexibility, we kind of use that one last because we don't have to spend.
Well, yeah, because in that audit, it showed there was like an eight hundred and ninety thousand dollar transfer out, but the Measure K money didn't change.
Right, exactly.
So you took it from the other two rather than that.
So that Measure K typically has the most flexibility, so we'll use that one last.
All right. Let's get me the other one out of the way, and we can do them both at once. One of the things, this is one point three B. One of the things that's mentioned in the transit audit, it talks about an on-demand service, and it talks about it in its connection with Bethany Home. Do we have something besides those, that big bus that we send around town that's part of this program?
Yeah, we use the smaller bus for the on-demand service. So that's operated by Bethany Home and their staff as they need it, or volunteers who come in and have a family member that needs to get to either a doctor or shopping, et cetera.
Okay. And then, so the cost of all that service is char, is in this thing too?
Yes.
Okay. Because I knew we had a small bus, but I hadn't seen it for a while, and I honestly thought it was gone since we got the big one, so, okay.
Takes care of the on-demand service.
All right. Can we have a motion to approve items one point three A and B?
So move.
All right. Item two, ordinance. Two A is ordinance number eight eighty-five, second reading and adoption. This is the change to the skateboard facilities policy, which allows scooters, and then we modified that after the last meeting to make it non-motorized scooters.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Do you have anything to add? Kai? Okay. We have a motion for, to adopt a second reading and to adopt the ordinance?
I'll move.
Second.
I guess my only question would be, has there been a problem at all?
No, we talked about that last time.
No, that's why we decided to make it permanent.
Right. Just bring it up. Yeah, I'm glad. I think it was a good move.
All right. Item two B, first reading and introduction of an ordinance that changes Chapter twelve point one six of the municipal code, sidewalk repair, maintenance, and replacement. Who's handling this one?
That'll be me, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Honorable City Council? Yeah, so the intent of this amendment to the sidewalk repair, maintenance, and replacement ordinance is to kind of clean up an outdated ordinance, provide clearer guidance for staff as well as the responsible parties with regard to the sidewalk repairs. So the Street and Highways Code requires property owners to be responsible for the maintenance and repairs of sidewalks adjacent to their property. I won't go through all of the changes, but I do want to go through and highlight the major differences based between the current code that we have now and what we are following versus this proposed code that we are, that you see in front of you. So the current code, when a hazard, a trip hazard, or when a sidewalk is out of repair, the city is notified in any number of ways. What we're required to do, based on that current code, is give an initial notice to the homeowner. A physical notice is also supposed to be posted on the, on the property at that same time. According to the code, work must commence within ten days of that initial notice. If it's not commenced within ten days, the city personnel or hired contractor would fix that hazard. That cost of repair is compiled by staff, and then a hearing is supposed to be scheduled with the city council. The owner may protest, although the city council's decision is final. And then if that cost of repair is not paid by the homeowner within that ten, within ten days from the date of that hearing, the lien process would begin on that property. So you can see there's quite a few challenges with that as far as the responsible parties actually getting, getting through that in that time period, as well as city staff enforcing that. So unfortunately, we're bound by certain timeframes called for in the Street and Highways Code, but with this proposed code, we try to provide a little bit more flexibility so that these, these repairs can be reasonably met. So with our proposed code, we would do the same thing with the initial notice. Once we've been notified that there has been a hazard, a second notice would be sent with, in seven to ten days after that initial notice. Work must commence within fourteen days of that initial notice, which is still tight, but that is what's required by the Street and Highways Code. An extension may be granted by the city engineer up to ninety days. If that work is not commenced within fourteen days, city personnel or hired contractor would fix that hazard. The cost of the repair would be sent to the homeowner, and then they'd have thirty days to pay that. We would offer a six-month interest-free loan for them to take care of that as well. If that cost, or if that payment hasn't been paid in that thirty days, or they haven't gone on to the loan program, a hearing would be called with the council. The owner may protest that as well, but that council, the city council's decision would be final. And then if that cost of repair is not paid within ten days from the date of the hearing, the lien process would begin on that property. So with that, there's other minor, small changes with regard to the personnel, the city engineer versus the old superintendent of streets. I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Rastuccia.
Thank you. James, I've got a few questions, and I, I'm glad you're doing this. This is good. I own a bunch of properties, and I'm just going to talk about timing, okay? It needs to be done. But I, but it says here, proposed codes, initial notice of repair and writing is either hand-delivered or sent by mail. I get all that, but it looks like not until the later notice is when you tell them what the hazard is. Do you tell them what the hazard is in the first notice? Because it doesn't say that you do here.
Yeah, we would be telling them exactly what the, what the hazard is in that first notice.
Okay, because here it says the notice identifies the hazard, kind of the third one down. So you do identify it in the first.
Yes.
Okay.
So the, yeah, twelve point sixteen zero eight, notice to repair specification. So it would, it would specify exactly what the work is to be done.
Okay. Okay. So the next thing is, when you send it by mail, do we get certified, you know, I'm just thinking about, somebody's on vacation for a while, and you give them a notice, and they're gone on a two-week vacation, and they come back, you've already started the work, and they don't even know that they've got, it needs to be done. I'm not suggesting else, I'm just saying that could be an issue for some people that, you know, may have an issue. I don't want to, it needs to be done, and I don't want.
I can't receive.
Huh? Well, something, but then people don't pick it up. I get all that stuff, but I just don't want to, I want to make it tight, but the other part is too, is sometimes when you own a bunch of properties, you know, you're getting people out to moving around and get stuff. Sometimes you can't get somebody out there for three or four or five or six days to even taking a look and do the work for you, let alone get started on the work. And I get what you would do is you'd get on the phone and say, hey, James, I got an issue here. I can't get a guy out there for fourteen days, and that's when the negotiating, I guess, could happen, correct? I mean, there's some flexibility there.
Correct, and I think, you know, just getting an encroachment permit is part of that process, and there's some time involved with that, too. I mean, to me, if a homeowner's coming in, they're getting their encroachment permit, they've got their contractor on board, they may not have a time set, but they're diligently working toward getting that, getting that complete.
Yeah, but didn't you say, and I thought I remembered in there, they can ask for an extension of up to ninety days?
Right.
So as long as they've started, there's some flexibility in there to get it done. The problem would come if you gave them a notice, and ten days later, you gave them another notice, and fourteen, that's twenty-four days, really, and they haven't done anything.
No.
That's when the problems start.
That's correct. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So they would just have to be proactive and call up or whatever and say, I can't get somebody out there for a week or two or three, and let you know, hey, I'm on it, I'm getting it done, but it's going to take a little bit of time to get people out there to do what needs to be done, right? So they've got that flexibility. The only, so all that works. The first one, though, the initial part, is I'm a little concerned about that they've got, we've got constructive notice, and they got the notice. Again, let's say they're on a two-week vacation, you know, and they don't know about it.
Yeah.
I'm not suggesting we, I don't know what we do about that. I'm just saying that could be an issue.
What we're currently doing is certified mail when we're sending out those letters.
I think Mike makes a very legitimate point here. She goes, in fact, it happened in front of my office. I had to redo the, you know, cement, and I knew that I needed to do what I needed to do, and we did it, but I, I may not be, well, I, my business is there, so I do know it, but I could be out of town for months, so in a business sense, so in my opinion, by what I've read on this, maybe I'm wrong, but the terminology should mean anybody, not just a person, you know? In my scenario, I owned that land as a business person, right? So.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's property owner.
You're going to notify the property owner.
Yeah. Yeah, the property owner would be responsible.
So it doesn't matter. You're telling me.
No.
No. You know, we do inspections on all our properties. We got people going out there looking at all the hazards and stuff like that, just to make sure, because we don't want people tripping and falling hurt herself. We're not worried about the loss, we're just worried about people getting hurt. But, but some people see something that's a half an inch, and they think it's okay, and really, that is a hazard. You can grab something on a half an inch and trip and fall, so even if you saw it, they may say it looks fine. Do you have any kind of standards in there that talk about, because I know you talked about if there's a hazard, and I don't want to get technical because I don't think it matters, a hazard's a hazard, but, you know, I've been places where the concrete's an inch high versus a place that's a half. I mean, what do you, what do you allow? What's considered a, what would you consider a hazard if we saw it?
Yeah, basically, a hazard would be anything that's out of ADA compliance.
Okay, all right. I think that's valid. That's very valid.
And you, I, back on that same subject, I have a client of mine that, that's land has a hazard, and it's caused by the hazard of his neighbor. He, he's willing to fix it, but his neighbor's not willing to. So where does that fall? Where's that trigger? You want me to mention?
Well, I'll give you an example. My tree sends a root onto his property and lifts up his sidewalk. But if that happens, I, he, as the property owner, has, as I understand it, has the right to remove that root and fix his sidewalk. And if my tree dies, that's not his fault, that's my fault.
Well, and I don't, I'm being the devil, devil advocate here. I'm not worried about it. I did what, I did my due diligence, and I fixed it, but I'm not trying to pick on Ted. Ted goes, well, you put that goddamn tree in there, and, excuse the language, but I go, Ted, you know, you made us put that tree in there.
Yeah, but it's still your problem.
We fixed it.
Yeah.
And it cost me like three grand.
My question is, there are a couple of places here in town that there's been a problem going on months.
Oh, no. It's way more than months. It's years.
And so, there's one on Second Street, on a corner where a tree, I mean, the sidewalk looks like a roller coaster.
I know exactly what you're talking about. We just need to.
How do we deal with that?
Yeah, well.
We've been going off complaint base. Once we receive a complaint, that's when we've been going.
So if you drive by, or Ted drives by, and you see that the problem is there, but nobody's complained, the problem just stays there?
Well, we have, I think there's plenty on our list that our city, city personnel or city staff that have added to that. So we have, you know, if we see that, if we see that, we're going to put.
Well, okay, but here's, now, then I'm going to ask the next question. So there's a list of twenty-five places in town that are in violation of this ordinance. How, and the property owner's not doing anything about it, so this ordinance gives us the ability to go in there and do something about it. How long is it going to take us to enforce the ordinance that we put in place?
We're going through that now, and I think that's the intent of this, is to clean up those outstanding items and, and move forward with the policies of the new ordinance.
It, you know, it really comes down to the fact that our streets are screwed up, our sidewalks are screwed up, and we're picking on certain people in a sense. It don't make sense. I know that sounds goofy, you know, but.
Yes, it does.
It makes complete sense.
It makes complete sense.
But do it.
No, I agree. That's my question. If we're gonna have an ordinance, and we're gonna have some rules, then do something about it.
One of the things that we find is hard sometimes for a private resident to get a contractor and go through that process, one of the things that we've been talking about is having a contractor lined up. So we're going to do an annual contract, I may get this a little bit wrong, James, so correct me, but I think we're talking about doing an annual contract that says you're going to do so many square footage as needed, we'll contact you, you have so many days to do it. He'll give us a price that, it goes through a bidding process, does have prevailing wage, but it will have gone through a competitive process. That price will be available for a property owner who, when we talk to them and say, yeah, there's a problem, you can either go and hire your own contractor, or for ten dollars a square foot, you could use our contractor, your decision. You can either go and hire your own contractor or for ten dollars a square foot, you could use our contractor, your decision. And then when we get our contractor, we'll have him go do, everyone who wants to go do it at certain times.
And I was going to mention the same thing. If you had like a list of people that can do it, then you don't have to worry about.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay, wait a minute.
So that's what I was going to say. I think that's a great idea to have some people on, in line, so you don't have to go out and get them every time. Because they're hard to get sometimes.
Right.
You know? But, but it's, but it's, but it is a hazard and if somebody trips on one of, even though it's our sidewalk, there is a problem. So I'm glad you're addressing it and I'm glad you're kind of speeding it up a little bit too, because I think that needs to be done. Now, just an aside, you go to San Jose and a lot of those places have those, they have the grass, the sidewalk and then whatever you call that center. There are trees. I mean, that's, some of those things are like three feet high. You talk about a hazard. The problem is some of those people can't afford to do it and the city doesn't go out and do it. I think in those cases, the city does need to do it, the city needs to put it in place and then assess it to the property or something. Because, you know, a lot of retired people can't afford to do it, but it needs to be done for the, you know, liability aside, you just don't want somebody to get hurt tripping over something and breaking a nose or breaking a hand or something like that. So I'm glad you're doing it. I don't.
And just to clarify, because you bring up a really good point, the liability actually falls onto the property owner. So it's in everyone's best interest to get this taken care of. So if we could provide an option for them, that's much easier than going out and getting their own bids and dealing with contractors, just sign up for the dollar per square foot.
That's great.
It's a win-win for everyone.
Well, one town that I lived in had that approach, but they had, did it one, one step different. If you wanted to hire the contractor, they told you how much it was going to cost. But then the contractor, rather than doing his yard in March, my yard in April and Tom's yard in July, they collected them all up. And then at one time, that guy went in and was doing yards all over town.
He won every six months or so.
Yeah, he got, he liked it because it was a big job and it was costly fishing for him and it helped lower the price for other people.
And for us, if we did it every three months, it kind of lines up with the ordinance.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing it. Good idea.
But he can't until we adopt this ordinance. So at this point, I need a motion on item three B, which is to.
Two B, right?
Two B. First reading and introduce the ordinance.
I make that motion.
All right. Item three C, first reading and introduction to an ordinance, infamous RV parking ordinance.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. We actually have two ordinances here in this one item tonight. One is dealing with RV covers, which is part of our development title, and the other one is dealing with the parking of RVs. So we wanted to tackle these together because often those go hand in hand. We did have a workshop, as you recall, going over where these RV covers and RVs could be parked on lots. And what we got out of that workshop, we, staff went back and kind of massaged the current ordinances we have. And there was some amendments to them, but there was not a whole lot of changes. The staff report, just really quickly, as far as the covers, which is chapter sixteen, one forty, the council did kind of desire to pretty much eliminate the setback for these RV covers, allowing them to be placed up against the fence, the post of them and up against the house. Because a twelve foot side yard, you really can't fit a cover in there and have a setback and still get an RV under it. So they would have to, they would have to obviously get a permit for this to be placed there because they are larger than a hundred and twenty square feet, but they could be up against the house and the fence. And then there is requirements that these covers are the, of metal, of a metal framework. If you look online, it's easy to see what kind of RV covers and we do have a description in our definitions now that kind of mandates those RV covers that have just the roof line on them and not solid walls. So that was a change in the RV covers. One of the other changes was to allow these to be placed in the rear yard. We never used to allow an RV cover in the rear yard area. One of the desires we heard from the council was to allow that to be placed in the rear yard area, to be able to cover an RV back there. So again, this can be slid back to the back fence with no setback and the side fence with no setback and be able to pull an RV underneath them. And then the last change for RV covers that was in there is there's a twelve foot height limitation on them. Sometimes that is a little difficult. Some of these RVs are a little bit taller and they can't quite fit under a twelve foot cover. So we did add a caveat in there that if they could justify it, we could go one foot taller than kind of the highest point on their RV. So if they have a, an RV that's thirteen foot high, then we can go up to fourteen feet on that. But they'd have to justify that and it'd be approved at staff level. Otherwise, twelve foot would be the, the max height on the, on the RV covers. As far as parking, we did go through that chapter. We just, most of that chapter, what you're seeing in there in the red is just cleanup. We used to require people to get permits to have an RV that was stored in their driveway for lots that were built pre nineteen eighty-eight. So before nineteen eighty-eight, if they had an RV or boat in their front yard, they'd have to get a permit. Something that, I don't think we ever, we don't even have permits for those. We haven't, since you've been chief or I've been here, enforced that. So we did clean up a bunch of that language and then changed some of the language in the RV parking ordinance just to be consistent across the board with our definition for RVs. Really no changes there though, so the pre nineteen eighty-eight lots, they still can have one RV in the front yard area. If they have more than one, it's, the second one or so has to be behind the front setback. And then the post nineteen eighty-eight, that's when the lots were required to have a twelve foot side yard. They are required to have, I don't know, RV behind the front setback. So they're required to park it in that, behind the front setback area, in that twelve foot area that was provided for them when the standards changed. So that's the changes in front of you tonight. That's kind of what we gathered out of the workshop. Turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and fire away. If we need to do some more adjustments on it, that's totally up to the council and we'll go from there.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
I have a few comments. The parking part I didn't really dig into, but I'm really concerned about being able to park these things in a backyard. I mean, I envisioned going out to the backyard and I did it, my neighbors got one of these two hundred thousand dollar, you know, fifteen foot RVs and I felt like I was in a mobile home, motorhome park if he parked it back there. He doesn't, he parks it someplace else. But I understand side yards, I guess, you know, that's kind of different, especially if you're, you know, all homes are lined up. But I got a real problem with approving it in the backyard. I just can't tell you why other than, you know, sometimes it takes time and when you look at this stuff, it makes sense and you go back and you kind of test it a little bit. That part I can't accept. The rest of it, I guess, is okay, but that I got a real problem with.
So just a little point of clarification on that for you is the current ordinances we have in place allow for an RV to be parked in the rear yard area already. They just don't allow a cover to be placed in the rear yard. So you, a neighbor could park their RV in the backyard, they just can't place one of the covers to park them under.
But this puts it, this allows it to go all the way up against the fence if it's fireproof, right?
This allows the cover to do that. Except our previous ordinance allowed someone to put an RV in their rear yard no matter what, if it was not covered.
So they could put that up against the fence as well?
Right now.
Right up against the fence in the backyard?
My opinion on this.
I guess I don't, doesn't mean what I'm, meaning what I'm saying. I'm going to do it already.
And what Mike says is completely legitimate, but I got a neighbor that's got a boat. And I, she was right to help and put up the damn thing. I talked about this the other day. And, but I don't have a problem with it. So as a, as a neighbor or as an individual, where is the problem really, you know, acquired or come into? Because I don't really care about what my neighbors doing. I really don't. It don't bother me. But I can see where it could be a problem. Is that? I mean, I read this thing and I'm like going, I'm not sure about exactly what it says.
Well, the apartment that my mother-in-law used to live in at Bethany Home, immediately behind her was a six foot high brick wall and there was an RV behind it.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
When they first put it in there, I thought, this is ridiculous. Within a month, who cared? The guy took care of it. It wasn't a problem. It was about two feet taller than the fence, but.
Are we over?
No.
No, you're right, Leo. I mean, after a while, you just can't.
All we're doing is defining what somebody can and can't do. It really doesn't matter at that point what the neighbor thinks. We're acting in their stead. If they go past it, the neighbor has a reason to complain. If they don't, we're saying, go for it. There are places over where we live where people have these motorhomes and they're all the way in their backyard. I don't even, didn't even know it until I started walking down the street, actually looking.
Because we're paying the asses.
No, because it's, it sounds like it's a big deal and it's not.
But you understand where I'm, where I'm trying to come from. I'm trying to come from the diplomatic thing of thinking, are we doing the right thing for the right reason?
Yes.
That's all, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, we are.
And I'm not saying anything against anybody or any person. It's just like.
So based, so based on what I said, if we already allow it and we're just defining it better than, I'm not going to suggest we go tell everybody they can't do it that's been doing it all this time. So I take back what I said about not liking it. No, seriously.
Darn it!
If it's already, why not? But I mean, if it's already allowed yet.
Make sure that's in the minutes.
That was a campaign ad against you.
I'm for the neighbors.
I just have one question, and that is, and it's one way or the other. Right now, our basis for making a decision is nineteen eighty-eight, pre and post. There are lots in this town that were approved before nineteen eighty-eight that have a twelve foot side yard. There are lots in this town approved after nineteen eighty-eight that don't have a twelve foot side yard. There are. I went and looked. And so, my initial question was, when I, we started this, was why don't we make it tied to whether or not the twelve foot side yard exists? Whether it, regardless of when it was built. I had a conversation with Mrs. Heiderpart and he laid one other thing on me, and that is the pre nineteen eighty-eight people can have an RV parking lot in front of their, their house, whereas the pre, the post guy can't.
We can have it in our backyard.
Then we got to get it out of the way, although I'm a pre, so I can put anything I want.
I've got an air conditioner in my side yard, so I can get anything through.
So that's my only question, is what if we tie it to the existence of a twelve foot side yard regardless of when it's built? Versus, not built, but approved versus the current situation. I'm open to discussion.
I would say my concern with that is you got a person who's got their, they've been parking their RV out in the front because they can for the last twenty years and now you're going to go tell them they can't. In my situation, I've got an AC unit in my side yard. I literally can't park more than about a twelve foot trailer there. But if I was, had that situation built nineteen eighty-eight or pre nineteen eighty-eight where I could park in before, I wouldn't want to be told that I couldn't now.
Well, but what if, because if I remember right, when we had the workshop, there were eighty problem RVs in town. Isn't that about right? Do I remember that right?
Sounds right.
Okay? So what if any of, let's assume you're one of them, but the problem, well, but the problem is you've got something in your twelve foot side yard. I don't care what, it's air conditioner, you built a shed.
Whatever.
Whatever, but it was done because under the rules, you could put your RV where it is. Okay, fine. I don't, that's fine. Then you come in, say, this is what I got to do. We put it on the record and we go. But if a person who buys that house, and now the shed's gone because the guy that sold it took the shed with him, so there's no reason that the person couldn't park it in there, should they be told? We're going to have exceptions. I don't care which way we decide this.
So you're just talking about grandfathering people in?
Yeah.
Now, you know, what the bottom line is, is it becomes a safety issue. When it's a safety issue, it's a safety issue. That's.
Yeah, but most of these aren't safety issues. Most of these are perception issues.
But I think, did you check with the fire department and that wasn't going to be an issue? Because I remember that coming up in our meeting.
What?
No, no, we, that the fire department doesn't care if something's out, if there's a fire, they can still get back there. Because I remember that coming up.
Yeah, I think talking with the fire department, you know, they need, they want three foot clearance on one side of the house or the other. So if you got an RV on one side, they can get through the other.
They can.
Well, I'm just saying, Dean said it's a safety issue and I think you already checked that and cops can jump over fences, so we're fine there. Most of them. Most.
So if this thing were sent forward as it is, we would have the nineteen eighty-eight demarcation line. And if your lot was approved before, A, you don't have to put it in the twelve foot side yard even if you have it, but you can only put one out front of your house. If you have more than one, they go back behind the front of the house, right? And if it's after nineteen eighty-eight, nothing goes in front of the house, it goes in the side yard.
Let me just throw this out for some thought process here a little bit. Is the pre nineteen eighty-eight lots, we do have people that keep them behind the front setback.
Yes, I know.
Just because they don't want to look at them, they don't want them in their driveway, they can, for what, you know, they have room, physically have room. So it's a, it's a lot easier from a staff perspective to enforce like a timeframe like that than to actually go out now and have to.
Measure and.
Look and go in Daniel's yard and go, oh yeah, you've got a air conditioner here, so we're going to go ahead and let you park yours out here.
Keeping an eye on you now.
And then the neighbor. So and then, and then what are those exceptions? You know, what are those exceptions? And then somebody says, I'm used to using this side yard area as a little patio area and I don't want to put a trailer here and my lot was built before this, so. And that's, it's hard to, it's kind of a very gray area and now I think we're trying to get rid of that gray area and keep things a little more black and white. So that eighty-eight demarcation line, as weird as it may sound, it does make a lot of sense from a staff perspective to go enforce. And, and some people already kind of keep their trailers back there anyways if they're, you know, conscious about it and want to make, you know, keep it looking nice. So that's just from our perspective on it.
Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Prove it as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I just have one other comment. I really want to acknowledge the work that Ken did on this because this has been kind of a thorn in some people's sides for a while. And he took the time to research it, have that workshop, and I think we've got something that's doable. And I want to acknowledge the work that you did.
Thank you. And one last item to add to that, the council did point out they do have a desire to be a little more proactive with enforcing the ones after nineteen eighty-eight that were in front. So we are putting things in motions for that. It's probably not going to be something that's a weekly thing we go check, but as we have time with code enforcement, we will be heading out and checking those just to, just kind of keep that enforcement up and make sure people know.
Thank you. Moving on, item three, three A, discussion downtown traffic congestion. Who's handling that?
That'll be me again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So hopefully you were all able to go through the staff report and the attached memo from, from fair and peers regarding the ever increasing downtown traffic congestion that we're dealing with. I wanted to kind of just give the council a brief overview of that technical memo here, here tonight. So first, just a quick background, last year, twenty eighteen, staff was tasked with trying to come up with certain mitigation measures to help alleviate some of the downtown congestion. In July of twenty eighteen, we ended up changing the traffic signal at West Ripon Road and Jack Tone. We put a, the left green turn arrow on a little longer for eastbound traffic on West Ripon Road, as well as kept the red light longer for traffic heading straight into town to try and encourage folks to get back on the freeway at ninety-nine and get around or avoid going through the downtown area. en- encourage folks to get back on the freeway at ninety-nine and get around, uh, or avoid going through the downtown area. Uh, we had kind of mixed results on that. The biggest problem that we saw is that the traffic congestion is just, it's sporadic. It just depends on the ninety-nine, uh, one-twenty merger there, and so sometimes it, it was on that cycle, and you have delays i- in other directions, so. And then early in twenty nineteen, we hired Fair and Peers to kinda come through, do a little more in-depth study, and, and try and come up with some, some remediations. So this is what I'll go through here tonight. So what they found is, it's obviously, like I said, not a daily occurrence. It's directly a function of the, um, of the one-twenty ninety-nine, uh, merger there and the, the traffic that's going on ninety-nine. Once that's, i- i- when that traffic is slow, uh, we see people getting off and, and feeding through the downtown area. And then any incidents, obviously, people are, are finding alternate routes to, to get to Ripon. Um, and then according to Caltrans traffic data, uh, sixty percent of weekdays, there's a diversion through Ripon, which is an interesting number. Obviously, there's, uh, uh, varying degrees of, of what a diversion is and how much traffic is involved in those diversions. But sixty percent of the time is quite a bit, um, during weekdays, and then twenty percent, um, on the, on the weekends. So here, here's one of the graphs that, uh, or, or maps that Fair and Peers had put together. This is, uh, through the Inrix, uh, analytics system that they have. Um, this first one, it represents the speed of the vehicles traveling through the various segments. It's a little hard to see. But, uh, you can see there's a couple of slowdown areas, uh, some red areas that are, are going through Ripon. But overall, it's not too bad. You see some yellows and oranges, uh, with one small red spot right around Ripon. Um, and then this map here, it, it's, it's the same day. It's just a, a representation of the actual congestion. So you can see the traffic, um, congestion through Ripon is, is not too bad at all. You see a lot of greens, um, on Airport and West Ripon Road. And then the, this, the traffic that you see on ninety-nine there is in the red and orange area, um, kinda through the big, the, the S curve. Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a normal, typical day. This is what we, I guess, would consider a good day. This is when you're not seeing excessive cars running through, through Ripon. Uh, but you're still obviously getting that slowdown on ninety-nine. It just hasn't gotten to that, that greater point.
Right, James. So this graph right here is showing us that there's congestion on ninety-nine, but the West Ripon Road going, coming through town is good, right?
Correct.
Okay, good. Just wanna make sure.
On this particular day.
On this.
On that particular day, yeah, exactly. And then that was like in an hour span, so it might've changed an hour later. So then this is another day, uh, with a different kind of snapshot between a different hour. So this is.
This is most days.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is most days.
This is what we're used to.
And so this is, this is the speed graph again, and you can see obviously, uh, there's very, very low speeds going on along ninety-nine, one-twenty. Obviously, through Ripon, you see a lot of yellow and red and orange, um, throughout, throughout the area. And then here's, here's the corresponding congestion.
I have one que- those are just on, are those just southbound and eastbound traffic that they're measuring?
Correct. Right, right here, yes. Yes, exactly. Yeah. So, and then here's that corresponding congestion. So you could see it's kinda just, just starting there. It's, it's, uh, you can see everybody's starting to kinda get down to West Ripon Road. And see a little backup at Austin, so.
Is there a timeframe?
What time is it?
Sixteen hundred.
Oh, it's right there.
This one, I believe, is four to five on that day. Yeah.
James, did they give you any idea of causation?
Um, it's, it's really capacity. Um, i- i- it's the big, there's just not enough capacity on the, on, on the freeways for the amount of cars that are coming through. Um, that, that's the biggest, the biggest issue. I'll kinda get into that a little bit here, but.
Well, what's really interesting is I thought it was because of ways, but if you take a look, it's red on ninety-nine. It's still green going through town, but maybe if you looked at this thing an hour later, it may have been red through town too.
Yeah, I think it's kinda.
Ways diverted them afterwards.
Yeah, I think it's kinda just a start.
I remember that day you guys were down at the bottom of the overpass and I stopped, and we were there for what, maybe fifteen minutes? It was amazing how the, it changed. One minute, there was two cars at the stop sign. Minute later, there's nine cars at the stop sign. Five minutes later, there's two. Just weird how it does that.
Things are gonna change.
Uh-uh.
Yeah, they're gonna change because I sent, I don't, I, I, I don't know if I sent it. I, I, I thought I sent it to, uh, Lisa, but they're gonna, they're gonna change the off-ramp on, uh, on, uh,
Main Street?
Austin Road. Gotta go right through one of my friend's property.
Yeah, but not until two thousand twenty-three.
Well, maybe.
Or in the meeting I was in yesterday.
They're gonna run right through his property, take his houses out. I'm talking about Bill Betscher.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not trying to, I don't think Bill would have a problem with it. It's like, we, I don't know if we can do anything about it.
Can't.
But our executive people potentially can, but.
No, it's done.
Yeah.
He's, it's over.
And, and you know what? The bad thing about that off-ramp, off, off-ramp, what, they're calling it an off-ramp, on-ramp. It's not. You can't get back on the goddamn freeway.
No, you can't.
You gotta, guess what you gotta do? You either gotta go through Ripon one way or the other.
No.
Basically.
No. Once it's done, you won't be able to get on northbound ninety-nine from Austin. You will be able to get off of the highway and onto Austin. You will be able to cross the highway east and west on Austin, but you will not be able to get on northbound ninety-nine from Austin Road.
You can't go the way that all these people are driving through Ripon.
That, yeah, but Austin Road has nothing to do with that. Has nothing to do with that.
I, in my opinion, I think it does. Cause they're gonna come through. They gotta go the back way through Frontage, or they gotta come through Ripon.
No. The west, the, the eastbound people on one-twenty are the only people that go through Ripon. And until Austin, that Austin Road interchange is fixed, they're gonna keep doing it. You're right. Probably even after they do the off, on-ramp, they're gonna keep doing it, cause the problem then, all it does is move south. They're gonna make it easier for you to get from eastbound one-twenty onto southbound ninety-nine, boom, then it stops. And that won't be fixed until they widen this bridge out here from four lane, from three lanes to four, and that's not for ten years.
Coming right through our town.
Yeah, they will. It's not gonna change it. You're right.
It's gonna get worse.
No, I don't know about worse.
Ma, I'm not, I might be wrong, but.
I don't know about worse, but.
It's going good now.
The Austin Road interchange has nothing to do with it.
I have an office on Main Street, and there's times where I can't get into my parking lot.
I know, I agree. There's times you couldn't go from the post office to your office.
And I live there.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not trying to be a jerk here. I'm just being sensitive to it. It's like.
You're sensitive now. You just wait five years.
I'll touch, I'll touch on that.
I think we need to, I think, I don't know what we can do about it. We probably got somebody here and sitting in our stands that can do something about it, but.
I'll, I'll touch on that here in, in a minute too, though, that one-twenty ninety-nine merger.
All right, let's finish up.
So just, just kinda, I thought this was interesting, but the, they found out some of the traffic patterns, and they're, they're getting this data from, from Caltrans, but over sixty-five percent of the traffic on one-twenty is from outside of San Joaquin County, and then fifty percent of the traffic on ninety-nine is outside of the county. So it's basically all that pass-through traffic that, that we're seeing, um, when they're cutting through, cutting through Ripon. And here, here's a here, here's really the big one. Um, looking at the Caltrans traffic data over the last eighteen ye- years, you can see that, uh, before the recession, uh, the traffic volumes were increasing at two-point-two percent a year. During the recession, it was at a half a percent a year, and then since two thousand sixteen to now, they're up, uh, three percent a year. Um, so basically, in those eighteen years, we're looking at a thirty-three percent increase in the overall traffic volume. So that is huge, and, and really without any capacity increasing, um, projects along ninety-nine or one-twenty, it's just, it's a compounding problem that's getting worse and worse and worse.
James, can you go back a slide real quick?
Sure.
Okay, so it doesn't start and end in San Joaquin County. Where does it start and end?
Yeah, they, they didn't provide us that data. I'm sure they could help us out.
He's saying that it starts and ends outside of our county, on going on one-twenty and ninety-nine, but where is it starting and ending? Okay, yeah, I, okay, but what's the breakdown of it? That's what I'm trying to get at. And, and where is it ending at? Is it ending in SAC? Is it ending in another county, you know? Cause obviously, it's people commuting from home to jobs and then doing the reverse commute, so where is the economic growth happening?
Well, they're, uh, I believe in their memo, and I don't have that exact figure here in front of me, but, um, the majority of the one-twenty, they're obviously going out to the Bay Area.
Right.
And ninety-nine is, is, is heading, heading towards Sacramento.
What can we do about it?
All right, let me, let me.
I hate to say this, but it's not a goddamn thing. It's bullshit.
That's where we're getting. Just relax.
I know, but I'm pissed.
Well, that's fine. Just give it a chance.
I'm not picking on anybody.
No.
I mean, I really don't hurt.
So I'll, I'll.
Okay.
I'll touch here on, on the one-twenty ninety-nine improvement project that, that Dean was talking about. So, um, this should provide some relief. Uh, Caltrans does estimate starting this in twenty twenty-one, uh, with the completion in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. Basically, this is gonna provide an extra lane to merge onto ninety-nine from one-twenty for that eastbound traffic on one-twenty. It does close the southbound exit ramp as well temporarily during this, during this phase. So that should help, um, just with that entire merger. Um, before you would get people kind of in the fast lanes, and they would be cutting over to get into the, uh, into that off-ramp, yes, lane. Um, so it should, it should provide some relief. It's just kinda hard to tell exactly how much relief that, that we're gonna see. Uh, and, uh, they're also, you know, recreating that bridge structure. Um, they're gonna be providing a, an additional road or a new road that connects Woodward to Austin, uh, that goes around Moffitt, uh, as Dean was saying, so. And this is kind of a, a visual of that, that project, just kinda showing you what it, what it looks like, so.
Yeah, is that the traffic?
Still red.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. Those are the different phases, but, uh, yeah, pick one, so. Um, and then here, here's the mitigation measures that, uh, Fair and Peers kinda came up with. The advanced loops on West Ripon Road, uh, would monitor speeds and queues on the eastbound traffic heading into Ri- West Ripon Road. Uh, they'd use that to activate special timing, um, sequences on the traffic signals down, downstream of that to try and encourage that traffic to get, um, basically what we were trying to do with that first one, but get that traffic, uh, on Jack Tone Road and back over to ninety-nine. Um, they'd also be upgrading the existing traffic signal controllers, um, at Robert and Wilma, with the, uh, there's, there are more special controllers, I guess, or, or they're, they're just newer up, upgraded, uh, controllers that are able to receive the, uh, the data and talk to each other.
So the signal that all three intersections would be tied to these detectors out on West Ripon Road?
Correct, and they, they would have, they'd be, uh, yes.
James, I have a question.
They would be, they, they would kinda use that based on, based on that, the, the volume of that car, those cars coming in, so.
So when I read this, I, it all makes complete sense, and it kinda slows people down and all that, but at some point, people are gonna just start diverting over to Second Street to avoid the lights. Or Doak, I guess, would be okay, but they're gonna divert to Second. They're on Second now. I mean, I watch this thing once in a while, and heck, I even get mad, cause I can't move around anything. You look at Second Street, it's just packed.
Well, and then Doak's packed all the way, or I mean.
Fremont and the other cities that are up with this, and they put mitigation measures, and you try to, really what you're trying to do is to change the algorithms that it, that the ways or whatever looks at it.
Says it's longer to go through Ripon than it is to stay on the freeway. That's essentially what you're trying to do. But as you do that, people find other options like Highland or Moller, or, you know, other ways to get through Ripon and, you know, go on Doak Boulevard. And, and that's what they found in, in Fremont too. So it's, it's hard to tell, you know, how, how that will, will happen.
People will divert to Second Street as well, they're letting them do it, I guess. But I, I mean, I don't know what you do. You're not gonna put a bunch of lights everywhere.
Well, but if they divert to Second Street, Second's, I, it'll get longer.
Yep.
What?
Exactly.
The idea, cause my daughter lives in Los Gatos, and they've gone through this too.
Yes.
And that's eventually what they did, is they kept putting people into places and places, and pretty soon, it was faster to stay on seventeen than it was to go into town.
I was gonna say, at some point, ninety-nine's gonna be a lot faster.
Seventeen's a joke.
It's an absolute disaster.
But you go into town on a Friday afternoon, kiss it off. You might as well find a restaurant and plan on staying there for two and a half hours, cause you're not getting back to the highway.
And it's bad now. I mean, you go, I go to San Jose in the morning. I'm telling you, eighty-two miles takes me three, three and a half hours. You can't, you can't even get there anymore, you know?
Yeah. And they closed down the on-ramp today to get on the Bay Bridge, cause there was a, a truck fire.
Oh, goodness.
And, and then some of these other, um.
The chief didn't like my solution, but I thought it would work.
Why isn't the chief just giving all those prick stickers?
Dean, what?
Sorry. I'm a bad person. I, I'm very frustrated about this.
We all are, Dean, but let him finish.
I live with it on a daily basis, in the morning, in the night, and it's frustrating. I blame nobody.
Okay, let him, let him finish his report.
I, I'm really not blaming anybody.
All right.
And other than that, just, uh, there's, there's truck route signage that we'd like to do, just more truck route signage. Uh, we've, we've had, as, as you can see, some of the first pictures, there's trucks that end up going down Main Street. They get stuck. They can't get turned around. They can't get back to the highway. It's not a truck route. It's not a designated truck route. We need to keep those trucks off there. So hopefully, a little more signage, just making trucks very aware that, uh, Main Street is not a, is not a truck route, putting some more no-truck route signs. Um, speed radar signs, and this is really just to, um, trying to help, uh, enforce or, or try to help kind of regulate those cars that are coming in and that are driving a little more, um, erratically with, with the increased traffic, so.
I think another thing that you understand is that, is that, uh, the bad thing about that roadway there, like for where I'm insinuating, is, uh, half that road is Caltrans, and the other half's ours. We have no control over that. Caltrans does what they want. They don't give a shit about us. They don't care about us.
Come on.
And that's where we need to empower ourselves with something that says, hey, step up to the plate. You got a problem here, cause you're deteriorating our roads, and they're bad. The road on the left side is our road. It's good. It's not bad. The road on the right, Caltrans.
All right, okay. Dean?
I know, I'm bending. Sorry.
A- a- and that's really it. This was just a, a kind of a visual showing you kinda where these, these, uh, measures would be placed. Our recommendation to the council is to approve the amendment to the agreement with Fair and Peers for fifty thousand dollars. They would be, that would basically take care of, um, the material labor to, to install these measures, so. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
That was my one question. So the fifty thousand is to actually do this?
Correct.
Okay.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
Are these the same guys that did the timing on the, uh, light on Jack Tone, and, okay, there's different people? I think we ought to be doing it.
Can't get any worse.
No, it can't. You need a motion, or? I think he's, I think he's testing ninety-nine right now to see what it's like.
Probably leaving until you get home in time. All right, can we have a motion?
So move?
To approve? Can you record his vote when he gets back? Jake's? Okay. So what do you want? You wanna just? How, okay, ladies, now what do we do? Sit here frozen until he gets back, or can we just take it, put him as a wave, and then he can? Huh? Okay. But if he comes back and wants to vote?
Yeah, you can.
You can take care of that, right?
Right.
Okay, all right, let's do that. All right.
Wait, here he is.
Yes or no?
An unenthusiastic yes. Okay, okay. I voted yes on that one, so.
We thought so, but I wasn't gonna let Mike do it for you, cause.
I think that's how you get into trouble.
Yeah.
All right, uh, three B is the twenty ni- twenty nineteen twenty budget discussion. Is that you?
So, uh, I have a draft budget prepared and I'm gonna go over the highlights of that tonight. Uh, I should have the council a hard copy of that or electronic, however you prefer to get that. Uh, by the end of the week. Uh, just to give you kinda the bottom line for this year's budget, it's really not that much different than last year's budget. Um, I, I think, uh, we're very fortunate in Ripon. Our revenue sources continue to be uh, stable. We continue to do a, a lot of proactive uh, steps to manage our expenses. And uh, you hear a lot of other cities talking about PERS right now and some of the impacts of uh, lowering discount rates. Uh, we're very fortunate to be in the position we're in, where only our public safety is within the, the PERS system. Uh, the rest of our employees are in a defined contribution and that is a uh, a real benefit uh, to, to the city. So kinda the bottom line, but uh, I'll just hit some of the highlights of the budget. Uh, so first, the, uh, we talked about this a couple of months ago. Uh, every year I track uh, expenses and uh, revenue each month and compare it to what we saw last year. So uh, the light blue line on the, the graph here is uh, the general fund balance uh, that we saw in uh, fiscal year eighteen nineteen. The dark blue line is what we're experiencing so far uh, that, this current fiscal year. I'm sorry, uh, the light blue line was last fiscal year seventeen eighteen. So in seventeen eighteen, we ended up with just under a one point five million dollar surplus in our general fund. So you can see we're, we're fairly close to being on track with that um, this fiscal year. I handed this out because I know it's very hard to read. But we, we talked about this a, a couple of times, but before we get started on the, the budget, I just wanted to really quickly go through. Uh, we have three main funds that uh, we, we, um, we operate from. It's our operating fund, which includes our general fund and the enterprise operating funds. We have our different capital funds. Uh, there are the general capital fund, the enterprise capital fund, and the PFFP capital fund. And then we have our restrictive funds. These are like the lighting districts, street and roads, um, benefit assessment districts. One of the things that uh, we do throughout the year uh, is, is, and you see it um, a, a couple of times a year where we transfer money. So the city council has an ability to transfer money uh, from the general fund, really to almost any fund, and have the most flexibility with, with those funds. Uh, right now, what we normally do is uh, that money will get transferred to the general capital fund. And that's where we pay the capital items from. So we'll talk about it today. You'll see certain items in the budget that are uh, uh, capital items. That are, uh, we call them capital outlay, but a lot of times we'll pay those items through the general capital fund. The enterprise operating fund, uh, when we set those rates, we set the rates such that they end up with um. A certain amount of money that we count on each year that gets transferred to the enterprise capital fund. That's to fund the uh, replacement and uh, of uh, different infrastructure items and capital items. And then um, the other fund uh, that we have is the PFFP fund. So uh, this is where we pay for the items, the, the infrastructure items and capital items that are related to growth. They're all tracked. Uh, all expenses and all revenue are within, uh, tracked within that fund. So uh, you have questions about that, I'm, I'm happy to answer, but that's just a general overview of how we um, we track the, the money within the city. One of the things that we did last year was uh, the city council developed uh, policies for, for reserve funds. So these are the different reserve funds that have been put in place. Uh, I included on here the projected balance at the end of the uh, fiscal year or start of next fiscal year. And then what that policy is. So the sick leave, you can see we have over just, or projected to have just over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we determined that amount based off three years of projected sick leave uh, buyout. We have a PERS refund pol- reserve policy. The balance in there is just under nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, based off three years of unfunded liability. We have a healthcare uh, reserve liability, uh, SAR litigation and natural disaster uh, balances. So I won't go through all those, but you can see how we develop those, those amounts and, and where we're at uh, at the end of this fiscal year. The one thing I would say is uh, probably here in the very near future, we're gonna have to take a closer look at the sick leave and PERS. Already both those balances are just under the uh, reserve policy set by the city council. So uh, it's very likely we're gonna have to, at some point in the near future, transfer more money into both those accounts.
And if I could just make a quick comment, Kevin, go along with that. I was just at a big conference and we talked about actuarial rates and everything else. And I know PERS is kinda stepping theirs down already, but everybody's ratcheting him down. So I'm not so convinced PERS isn't gonna take another ratchet down at some point. Not in the too distant future.
Is there any other reason for that? As far as employees are calling sick more or taking advantage or?
No, not, not at all. Uh, the, the sick leave is a program that we have. When employees retire, they're able to cash out their sick leave. So we, we go through every, every few years to an actual, actuarial study on that. So we use that study to just determine the um, three years of projected buyout. Well, I'm sorry.
And one other option, if we have a little bit of a problem, is to reduce the number of years to.
Yes.
I mean. Three years is okay. Argument could be made that two years is better than one.
Right.
You know, so.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's more than one way to skin that cat if we ever get there.
Yeah, and both of those, when I ran the numbers, they both were very close right now. So uh, we, we can see next year where, where everything ends up at. I mean, my guess would, sick leave would, would probably be okay. PERS would, is one we'd probably need to really look at. It's kinda my, my gut feeling. The, the one I forgot to mention is at the very bottom, uh, the city council a number of years ago set up a street and road reserve fund. Uh, this was done to take care of the worst roads in Ripon that we um, are not able to, to fund through our normal operating budget. Those are, those funds are really, we've been trying to focus those, focus those on roads that have not yet uh, completely failed and, and really focusing on preventing those from failing. Uh, the council wanted to set money aside to deal with the worst roads that have already failed. So right now, there's about two point four million in that account. Uh, we have contracted with a consultant who's working on a study uh, downtown, if you recall, to, to look at some of the transportation improvements. Give us a, a, at least a phasing plan and some ideas of infrastructure that we'd be looking at um, throughout that area.
The other thing I'd like to see in the not-too-distant future is an estimated cost to redo all the red roads on that map that you have.
Yes.
Those are the ones that are, the only way to do it is to strip them down and put new road in. And I'd like, I think it's important that we know what we're looking at.
Do you, we have that number. Is that, is that the thirty million dollar?
I, I'd have to, I'd have to double check with that report. I don't know.
We, we have that number. We can send out.
Just the red ones?
Yeah, just the red ones. I, we have, we have that number.
Okay.
I thought you broke it down for each level, but the cost was.
We do.
All those to some minimum standard of good or something like that.
Yeah.
I, I think it's important that that be kept in front of us because it's, it's easy to say, let's spend four hundred thousand to redo those roads. But if we never get close to the one million dollars that it's gonna take to fix this one.
Right.
That's what people see.
Yeah.
You know?
And that's what people bitch about.
No, that's right.
That's, you know, that's life.
So this is the overall budget summary. This is uh, all the city accounts, uh, general fund, enterprise accounts, capital accounts, et cetera. Uh, does not include transfers or capital items that are part of the budget. Uh, for nineteen twenty, the budget is just about twenty-two point seven million dollars. What we projected for the current fiscal year eighteen nineteen is, is about twenty-one point six million. You can see as far as the percentages of uh, where the money is being allocated to is really not that much different. So like I said, the budget, there, there's not a lot of changes that are happening. So general fund's still about fifty-one, fifty-two percent. Enterprise funds are the next largest, thirty-one, thirty-two percent. Uh, one of the big things that we, we talk a lot about is, is staffing and uh, I, from, I, I think the department heads and, and really all the employees. Uh, ever, ever since the recession and there was quite a few positions eliminated, everyone has uh, done everything that they can to uh. Continue to provide a high-level service to the community with the least amount of staff that's possible. And I, I appreciate everyone's efforts in, in doing that. You can see it here by this graph that, that uh, what we do is, is, is very efficient. Ripon is the light blue line on here and then we average a number of other cities uh, around us. These are essentially the same cities we use for our salary survey uh, that are in the area, but it's the average of those. So uh, administration um, i- i- is pretty close to the same as everyone else. Uh, engineering, we are a little higher, but that's because we do a lot of stuff in-house. We do our own designs. We do our own um, inspection. And, and when I first started here, we, we started tracking that and comparing it to consultants. If I remember right, what it would cost us to do a project was on the order of two to three to, to four percent. For the cost of the city to, to do that, whereas consultants are, you know, at least ten percent. So uh, we're fairly efficient having our own staff doing that, but obviously you can see on here, it does require more staff. Uh, planning, economic development, pretty close to the average. Uh, building department, um, we're, we're below the average. We do supplement with uh, consultants as needed because there is a lot of ups and downs throughout the year. Uh, recreation within the average. Public works is a little deceiving. Every city's a little different of what their public work crews are responsible for. Uh, we do garbage, parks, a, a lot of other uh, cities uh, don't do garbage. They, they um, go out and, and have a private firm take care of that. So uh, we are higher, but we do do um, a lot of stuff in-house as well, too. Uh, police department, that's the big one. Uh, we always talk about the uh, officers per thousand residents. We're about one point five right now. The average is uh, just under point nine officers per thousand.
Well, and uh, I, I got the email the other day that we're potentially losing three uh, officers.
Yeah, but we'll replace them. It's not that we're losing the number, it's just people.
I understand that. Is, is that a concern?
It's, it's always a concern because um, there, there's obviously a lag between uh, once the officer leaves the city and by the time you hire someone, goes through a black background. And uh, get them on, on their own on the streets after all the training. So uh, there's definitely a concern uh, with, with folks leaving, but it, it does happen.
I get it, but. I'm a, I'm a advocate of uh, that support. And I think everybody on this council is, and the chief probably can answer to it better than anybody can. Are, are these people we losing or are these people that really mean something to our, us or not? Chief, I guess, sorry.
I don't get it, sit down and be talking about personnel issues quite frankly, when it comes to that. Let's talk about that, please.
Yeah, we, we can move on and, and talk about the, the uh, number of full-time employees. Um, this does show a graph um, from before the recession, we, we were um. Sorry, my eyes are not that good. Uh, just over ninety. Uh, a- and you can see where we're at. To- today is just, uh, been about seventy-seven employees. One of the things for twenty nineteen that uh, staff is, is um, recommending to the city council. Is that we look at hiring a um, full-time uh, records clerk for the police department. This was a position that we had in place prior to the recession. Uh, once the position was eliminated, uh, a C, an existing CSO full-time employee. And our existing IT uh, full-time employee took on a lot of those duties. And uh, it worked fine for a number of years, but with some of the changes that have been happening uh, related to uh. Uh, the new state laws pertaining to records retention, management, uh, public access and such, it, it really has put a burden on those existing positions. I, I think we would estimate that the, the CSO right now is probably spending eighty percent of uh, that person's time related to records clerk. And then the IT about fifty percent of their time, so uh. And I've actually been talking about this probably for two or three years now, um, the timing of this. And, and like I said, with the change to state law, it really has become um, something that would be very helpful to the police department. Uh, what it does is it would free up the, the CSO uh, to, to do more um, uh, some of the other functions, specifically animal control. Uh, so the, the records clerk, the total salary uh, and impact to the general fund with, with salary benefits and, and uh, the burden that goes along with that position. It's about eighty-five thousand dollar impact to the general fund. But because that person is able, or the CSO is gonna be freed up to take on additional responsibilities. With animal control, uh, you're not gonna have to fill uh, two temporary or two part-time animal control positions. Those are about forty thousand dollars a year of impact to the general fund. So the net impact to the general fund is about forty-five thousand dollars. Moving on, um, I, I just wanted to focus on, I caught you, we talked about controlling expenses earlier. Um, I'm not gonna, I think we've talked a lot about the differences between the sworn and uh, non-sworn employees in the retirement plan. One of the things that, if you recall from last year, and you'll see it on the next slide a little bit. What you're seeing as far as the twenty nineteen or twenty nineteen twenty employer compensation rate is significantly lower than what it was last year. Um, enjoy it while we can for this year because it goes up uh, pretty dramatically. It's lower because we have paid off uh, a side fund that we've been paying for, for a number of years. So that liability, we have a number of these different liabilities that we pay on. But uh, that one, we, that uh, was, was paid off, so uh, we're, we're seeing the benefit this year. For two, we have three tiers of employees wi- within the um, within the PERS system. And you can see the tier one employees uh, make up just, just above half of our employees at this time. Uh, you can see the number of tier threes are, are rapidly growing.
So is tier three the Pepper?
The Pepper, yes. Yeah. Um, and then you can see the total cost for each of those categories and the costs uh, per employee. Below that are the other fifty-three employees uh, that are non-PERS that are within the uh, I call it a four, it's very similar to a four oh one K system. Defined contribution. Uh, and you can see the total cost is just over six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Works out to be uh, just under thirteen thousand dollars per employee. So th- this is one. We've done a couple of things as far as controlling costs. We prepaid some of the uh, uh, liability to, to PERS. And we're gonna talk about that going forward. Uh, it's a strategic, strategic planning meeting. That's a topic of discussion. You know, if we wanna continue doing that or not. And then obviously, the other thing we just talked about was we set up a reserve fund. Um, so uh, being as proactive as we can with um, controlling this expense. This is the uh, projections. The blue lines on here is what we were experiencing, what we were projecting. If the discount rate stayed at seven and a half percent. Uh, and then the red li- the red lines are with a adjusted discount rate at seven percent. So you can see nineteen twenty are going down again. That's the paying off the uh, the side fund liability that we had. But you can see some pretty significant uh, increases after that. Um, so like I said, enjoy nineteen twenty. It's, it's nice to have the reprieve that we're having. Uh, but going forward, this is something that we really need to um, be aware of.
Kevin, I have a question on this. So they've got a step-down process, right? And when are they, when are they stepping down? Do you, do you recall offhand?
Um, I don't.
Wasn't going like a quarter or half every?
Yeah, I think we're at seven and a quarter right now. I think next year it, it goes to seven.
But I, but I don't think they kept it going until it was five or so. I think they stopped, but I'm just saying that I think it's gonna ratchet a little bit. Well, I think so. If you take a look at the markets, I mean, you just can't keep the stuff up forever. Rates are eventually gonna come back and. I didn't think it's gonna ratchet down again, so I, I'm glad you're keeping an eye on that because it's, that's a big, gonna be a big expense.
You, you can see on here, I mean, nineteen twenty, we're just above six hundred thousand dollars, six hundred thousand dollars in, in our payment to PERS. Uh, but going forward, you're, you're over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars with, within three years. So a pretty substantial increase in, in expense. Uh, health and welfare, a- again, something that uh, we're trying very hard to manage. Uh, you can see the last four years have been pretty reasonable as far as rate increases. I think between calendar year eighteen and nineteen, it was about a three percent increase. Uh, we've talked about it before. I won't spend a lot of time, but we, we have been doing a deductible reimbursement plan that has had a lot of success. Um, and the other thing uh, that's not shown on this number, uh, employees are actually participating uh, financially into the cost of the healthcare. And uh, so employees are, are putting in just under seventy-five thousand dollars, paying for their own healthcare expense. Uh, so this is uh, focused on the general fund. Uh, similar graph is what we showed before. Uh, budgeted for the general fund in nineteen twenty is eleven point nine million or pretty close to that. What we're projecting in fiscal year, fiscal year eighteen nineteen is eleven million dollars. And I just wanted to point out, one of the big reasons for this is kinda what we were talking about earlier. Some of the staff turnover that we've seen in the police department, they don't get filled right away. We actually added a position last year. A new position still hasn't been filled, so I budget that number. I budget those like they're, like everyone. So I budget that number, I budget those like everyone's here all year long, but obviously they're not. So that's part of the reason you see a pretty significant increase between what we're projecting for 18, 19, and 1920. The other thing I would point out is when employees go out on workers' comp, that they don't hit our books because they're being paid through the workers' comp system. So that's another reason that we had quite a few employees within the public works department go out on workers' comp. So those are all really resulting in that lower projection for fiscal year 18, 19. Revenue, this starts out before the recession, kind of goes through the recession to where we're at today. Before the recession, we're about $10 million a year in revenue, now we're over $12 million. So pretty significant increase. Obviously, fuel cells have gone up, that usually is a pretty good burst to our revenue. It's interesting, this is one of the first times I've seen fuel be this high with the price of oil as low as it is. So be interesting how long this continues.
SP1.
Part of it, yeah. 12 cents, yeah.
Is there a way, well, I know there's a way, I don't know how much time, effort, and cost it would be. But in order for that thing to have any meaning, you really need to convert the six...
What is the lowest year?
10, 11?
Eight, nine?
To this year's, to current money. Otherwise, so what? It's up 2 million, but if you have $10 million is really $12 million now, we haven't gained a dollar in those years.
You guys probably just moved out and we're in trouble. Right?
This is the major general fund revenue sources that we have. This is, sales tax is the blue line, the red line is property tax, green is motor vehicle in lieu. Those are the three big ones that we have in the general fund. So you can see that the sales tax obviously is the most, has the most changes or significant changes year over year, and really a lot of that's related to the sale of fuel. Property tax, pretty consistent, I think in Ripon, we've been very fortunate even during the recession. We didn't see the drop that other cities experienced, but it came back fairly quickly. And then motor vehicle in lieu has been a good revenue source. I also included on here, because we talk about it a lot, building permit fees and fees from planning and engineering. So those do, those are the purple and the cyan are kind of the green line, the smaller line at the bottom there. But, you know, those are significant also because they vary so much throughout the year. But you can kind of see how they compare to the three big sources that we have. One of the things we've talked a lot about over the years, I think when we started looking at this was back in 1112, but this is a summary of the Mistletoe Sports Park financial history since 1112. At that time, we were recovering about 56% of the expenses through the rental of the fields. Over the years, we've gotten better at it. And in 1718, we're just under 70%. Projecting 1819, we're at 74%, and what's being budgeted right now for 1920 is 71%. So that does not take into account the use that we get in our city recreation program. That is just purely expensive revenue that we get in. If we were to charge ourselves rent for the city soccer league, the city flag football league, and the city baseball league, we would be recovering closer to 85 to 90% of our expenses.
So is this revenue the TPR income?
Or the baseball and softball?
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah. So one of the things you just noted, in 1617, we renegotiated the lease. When they put in the turf, it would be negotiated with a different expense there. But it is indexed, so it'll continue to go up over time. I think this was the first year they started indexing again. These are just different items that I wanted to point out. These are items in the budget that go out to the community. There's a chamber donation, $9,100. I do have Fourth of July staffing at $6,000. I understand the chamber, at this point in time, is not moving forward with the Fourth of July. And at this point, it's probably not going to happen for this coming up year, but it is in the budget at this point, just in case someone does come forward and want to take the event over. Ammon Blossom staffing, the budget is about $35,000, so a pretty significant amount of money that the city contributes into that, to that event. Senior city, senior sitter, center, sorry, $95,000. Library is about $90,000. We operate the build, or we don't operate the building. We maintain the building and the parking lot, and then we pay for some extra hours, for the extra hours, about $22,000. We have an agreement with the fire department for hazardous material handling. That's $45,000 a year. And then we split the cost of the aquatic center with the school district, that's about $30,000.
Have we gotten a bill yet for last year?
We just got a draft of the bill that's being reviewed now.
Does that correspond, what that money can also bring us back in? Or no, that's just the expense?
These are just expenses, correct. I'm sorry, the school district does, this is the net.
This is the net cost after all the incomes have been put in.
Yeah. 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 I won't go through this, I have included all the projects that James talked about when he went over the CIP program. These have been incorporated into the budget. You can see there is some significant street and road projects that are a part of this list. Capital Outlay, so these are different requests that I received from department heads. Computer replacement, just trying to keep up on new computers. Same with chairs, I think there's been a lot of requests for new chairs within city hall.
Is the city clerk getting a new chair in this deal?
She's the one who's in charge of buying the chairs. Everyone is taking her say.
Well, you know, next thing you know, they're going to be getting stand-up desks and all this other stuff.
There can't be anything worse than the chair she's got right now.
I agree with that.
She's not old enough yet.
There is a request for a pickup with utility box for parks, as well as a John Deere Gator with the water department, electronic leak detector, hot pressure, hot water pressure washer for garbage, a roll-off truck. The one thing I would mention about this, last year we had talked about trying to take an existing truck and convert it into a roll-off truck. What they found is as they were doing that, the truck we were using was a, was it right-handed or left-handed drive? It was the wrong way. So we weren't able to use that truck, or it was not ideal to do it. So we went back to the drawing board, and this is essentially a new roll-off truck.
So that would give us two? Okay.
And then also a...
Are we talking about a dump truck?
No, where they put the big...
For hauling those bins over at the recycling center.
And then there's a back truck to the, $500,000 for the sewer department. The one thing that we talked a lot about is the garbage department as far as garbage trucks. It is not on here, but Ted and I were talking. When we went through the fire, we had replaced two trucks at that point. And I think the same year, we also replaced another truck.
They were huge trucks.
But we ended up getting new ones. We interim, we had new trucks.
We bought those two from Antica and pulled us over.
So we had three trucks at the same time, purchased at the same time. So next year, we want to start putting a truck in there and spreading those out so that all come due at the same time. Plus, some of the garbage regulations are changing, and there's going to be a need for additional trucks in a way, so just to give you a heads up with the garbage department and trucks, that's a significant expense.
But doesn't the garbage department make money?
No.
It's an enterprise fund.
I'm sorry. I'm hard down with that.
It's paid for through the utility rates by the users. So at the end of the day, money does get put into a enterprise capital fund to fund new garbage trucks, but it doesn't really make money.
But the garbage enterprise fund is the smallest of the three. Buy a lot compared to water and sewer.
All adds up.
Well, but that truck is going to take a significant dent in that garbage enterprise fund.
That's right.
I'm not disagreeing.
So with that, I, yeah, right. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
More?
When the real number starts flowing in.
Yeah, exactly.
Good job, Kev.
Yep. All right, moving on, reports. Chief?
Nothing to report, sir.
No.
Good job. Ted, let's keep it going.
Ted, hey, you get this in December. Until then, be quiet. He's practicing.
Myself, okay. Mr. Mayor, with the water usage for April was, we were at 34%, 34.6% from 2013.
34?
34, yeah. So I think, I think as the heat comes up, I think we'll see that shrink. That brings our 12-month running average to 24% for the year. That's it.
Kai?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. You did bring up the aquatic center. I do have, I just got an email with the latest 2017, 18 figures. I can get you a copy of that. But in our staff meeting, we talked about doing a two-year comparison. So I'm getting the revised numbers for two years ago, so we can compare it with the ones I just got today. So as soon as I get that...
I'll be interested in how this comparison compares to the last comparison.
I'll get that to you, but it looks like we're heading in the right direction there. And then Kevin and I will also work on another report to bring back in June or July on the new indoor facility and the leasing of that and some, what we think we can bring in in revenues versus the cost. And so we're working on that right now.
When's that thing?
So...
I went out there one day and it was concrete. A week later, it's framed up.
It's pretty big now. Yeah, it's coming up. A six to eight month process, but, you know, the weather, we're getting some more rain and some different things could factor in, but we're hoping somewhere around September.
Cool.
And that'll do it, thanks.
Mr. Zeiderbart?
Yes, I have a few items. There's a couple of things that we have on our radar. And we'll be meeting at staff level here to kind of figure out how to proceed forward some of these. We did get a project referral from the county for a new cell tower site. This is the sprint tower that has been shut down at the Weston Elementary. They have found a spot to locate that in the county, and it's actually straight down this road here where the strawberry stand is, in the backside of that site. It is six, it's about 650 feet away from our existing residential. Our ordinance talks about cell towers not being any closer than 500 feet. So it is outside of kind of a buffer zone for any existing residential and city limits. However, where they are placing it, it is right next to some future residential that we have in our general plan, which would wipe out a little chunk of that area. So we'll be meeting at staff level, see how we'd like to comment on that to the county on that project. And those are due back to the county by June 6th, so we'll be putting something together for that. Another interesting, a little bit of information we got from the county is they are actually moving forward with a commercial cannabis business ordinance. This kind of all started last year where they were looking to tax the cannabis, and it went to the voters. That actually failed in November. So they've gone back and amended the ordinance to state that the ordinance would, it was not going to become effective unless that measure passed. It did not pass, so now they've gone back and they're making some amendments to the ordinance to where instead of based on the tax, they can now, someone can now operate a business like that by using development agreements with the county. So instead of getting money through taxation on that, they would just negotiate that through a development agreement. There is another ordinance that goes with it, which is their development title. And what they are proposing on ag-zoned property is to allow for cultivation, distribution, and manufacturing. There's quite a few other requirements in their ordinance. I'm just kind of giving the reader's digest version here, but they'd have to jump through quite a few hoops with the county. However, ag-zoned property, if you draw a line around the city, where the city limit line is, everything on the other side of that line is ag-zoned. So one of these could be located at our doorstep with the county approving that with the development agreement. And so they did a first reading introduction of the ordinance at the April Board Supervisors Meeting, and they have a meeting next Tuesday to do the second reading and adoption of that ordinance. And the other title or the other ordinance that goes with that is going for a first reading and introduction at that same meeting with the county board supervisors. So we will be meeting here again at staff level, figure out how we'd want to make some comments back to that. Might be something we bring back to the council even to get your input on. That's something I think we'd have, want to have some say in, at least if they're going to try to locate it within our sphere of influence here in Ripon.
So if there's a big fire, everybody in Ripon's going to get high?
Well, I have a question, and this might be for Mr. Terpster. What happens if a business is approved on county property? And five years later, it's annexed to the city? And that city has a rule against business, marijuana business? Do they go out of business?
They would probably have a vested right to come in under the permits that they have with the county. Typically, that's what happens.
That needs to be in the comments.
So there's a fish farm out there, you know, they come into town and they could operate their fish farm as long as they, they would be legal and non-conforming in all likelihood.
Yeah, and so one thing we wanted to, we'd probably be discussing, or we're thinking about sitting down on Thursday as the staff and going through some of this, is one of the questions would be, is they have to renew their permit every year with the county? So if they get annexed in that timeframe and then have to renew at a certain point, not sure how that would work, that they would lose their conforming status?
What would the tax round of occasion be for that?
Well, the taxes would then come to the city at that point.
There is no tax, it's a development agreement money.
Yeah, you can call it what you want in a development agreement, if it walks and quacks and so forth, like a duck, it's still a duck.
So if the development agreement required that they give the county $1,000 a year, that rolls to us?
Yeah, but what, rather than go through those vagaries and maybe miss it down the line, well, I think one of the things we're going to be talking about at staff level is, you know, the development agreement statute in the state of California, the government code, says that cities and counties may enter into development agreements. And one of the things we may try to influence the county on is to say, look, if it's within our sphere, particularly if it's within our sphere, then we ought to both be a party to the development agreement because, you know, it just doesn't make any sense otherwise. You're literally, in some cases, right across the street.
That's what I say, it could be right across the street.
So we would want to have, we would want to be signatories to that as well and be a part of the negotiating process.
Okay.
And that's the worst-case scenario, right? The best-case scenario is that we have a change to their ordinance or some clarification to their ordinance that says if it's within the sphere of influence of a city...
We have to say yes.
We have to say yes as well, there'd be some sort of joint approval process.
We want the tax, we want the tax round of occasion to that. Am I right or wrong on that question?
Well, if you have to provide services to it, you want the taxes and fees to come off it, no question.
Well, but ideally, if you have, if you have adopted the position that marijuana is not going to be permitted in city limits, in my mind, you want the ability to continue to enforce that as the city grows.
Not saying I'm for or against it, I'm saying if it's going to happen, you got no control over it, you got no money out of it.
No, I know.
And then lastly, I think we touched a little bit on this, is the Caltrans project, the 120 to the 99 interchange improvements there. They are, they've sent a notification out for their environmental document, looking for comments on that by May 25th. If we do have some comments about maybe some mitigation measures that might help some of the traffic, because I think living through that construction phase is going to make things quite a bit worse while it's going on. And that's about a two-year build-out or two-year build process. So we might make some comments to them on that to see if we can get some of that incorporated into the environmental document so they could study, possibly have some mitigation measures that they could make part of that environmental document, so. So those are the three items that are kind of on our radar. We'll keep you up to date on where we stand on those. Those are things that we need to kind of respond to quickly on these. Those are things that we need to kind of respond to quickly on this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Peace?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, real quick, just, I provided the council with the updated project list. There's not too many significant changes, I just did want to highlight, highlight that Doak Boulevard, Emma Holland, which we're awarded tonight, will be starting soon and should be completed by August, so. That's it.
I appreciate this, because I, it's nice, because I get questions from people about things once in a while, and this gives me some information, so, thank you.
Well, and answer two of the questions I was gonna pull. Off the agenda, we answered on this, so that was helpful, thanks.
Mr. Turpstra?
Just during Jason's report earlier from the Assembly Member, I just thought it would be interesting, student loan forgiveness for nurses and doctors, is that right? Why not attorneys?
Oh, jeez.
We're chronically underserved.
He wants it to pass. How about retired people, we need money.
You know that, you live right next, you work right next door to me, I'm just kidding. Perfect. Stacy, yeah, not me.
She's one hell of a, she's one hell of an employee. She's not an employee though. She's a partner.
She said she told me so.
Yeah, that's right. Had no problem reminding you, I'll bet. Anything else?
I have nothing else, no, I'm just.
Mr. Werner?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Uker?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate Stacy. Thank God Dom's halfway retired.
Mr. DeGraff?
I'm just wondering why engineers aren't included in it, but hey, that's another, another story.
Should have laughed.
Go revise the resolution.
High note, yeah.
I do have something to report. Mr. Werner and I, last week went to DC for the One Voice Strip. It's not like it used to be, I don't think, we're not coming home with big checks from Congress as part of an earmark program. But I think we had some pretty productive meetings, and I think the main takeaway was, don't listen to the news media when they tell you the Trump administration and Pelosi and Schumer have come to a two-trillion-dollar deal, because one, there's not enough projects to spend two trillion dollars on in the next ten years, and number two, there's no way to pay for it without probably raising the gas tax.
Sounds like a tack, that kind of sounds like you're rerunning the country.
Overall, I think we had pretty productive meetings. Like, good, good group of different agencies that we met with good connections, I think. So, I felt like it was more productive than our meetings last year, so, that was good. Anything else you could add to it, or?
No, it, it was good, and I, I think the other benefit you get from this is just the opportunities to have discussions with the local agencies. You know, we're all within thirty minutes of each other, but going back there, I think there were some productive discussions with RTD, with ACE, just about some upcoming projects. So, it was a good time to get to know them a little bit better and have those discussions, so.
Yeah. With the.
Could I throw a question in here?
I don't know if I'll have the answer, but.
Mantica, how, because I always in the past felt not good about Mantica, about what they felt about us.
We don't care what they think about us.
Well, I get that, but, it's probably a weird thing, but.
I don't, you'd have to ask them, I guess, on that one.
Kevin, your report's getting out of hand.
It is.
Maybe.
I think to finish that off, the last thing I would say is, as always, thank you to the folks from the public over here, we appreciate your input. Whether you're here to give us a report or not, appreciate you listening, and that's it.
Mr. Restusha?
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is, happy Law Enforcement Week or Public Safety Week, what is it?
National Police Week.
That's it, that's it. I was close. Happy National Police Week.
Thank you, sir.
All have.
Vice Mayor Parks?
Nothing to report.
And I have nothing either. We don't have a, what?
We do.
We have closed session, right?
We do.
So, now, how does this work? Do I ask for public comment and then adjourn to closed session? Do any of the three of you have anything to say on our closed session item? Hearing none, we are adjourned to closed session. Okay.
Yeah, for those who, for the multitude that will be.
Am I gonna have to keep this, or are we quizzing this next time?